One call to June 26, 2025, O'Fallon City Council meeting to order. Rural call, Katie?
Mayor Hennessy.
Present.
Councilmember Wexler.
Present.
Councilmember Roth.
Present.
Councilmember Boyer.
Present.
Councilmember Thompson.
Excused.
Councilmember Bibb.
Present.
Councilmember Caschella.
Present.
Councilmember Kewen.
Present.
Councilmember Taylor.
Present.
Councilmember Cook.
Excused.
Councilmember Ragsdale.
Present.
All right, folks, you have an agenda for me, what's the pleasure?
Second, Ragsdale.
Won by Councilman Bibb, second by Councilman Ragsdale. Questions or comments on favor?
Aye.
Any polls, anything on the agenda that you folks want to talk about? Seeing none, workshop discussion item, pavement repair presentation. Mr. Bender.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we have a little presentation for you to talk about our pavement repair process. So when we get started here, we also have Wade here to join me at the end to talk about our pavement strategy. So this is mostly about what the street department does, but like I said, we're going to close the presentation with more of what engineering does with the contracts. But before we get into it, a little bit of background information on what's going on with our streets. Our streets are, in general, not everywhere, but in some areas, suffering from a condition called alkali carbonate reaction, ACR. And that's a chemical reaction in the pavement that stems from the type of rock that was used, a type of limestone that was used. And about seven or eight years ago, we were able to identify what that was and ban it from use in O'Fallon. But the problem is there's a 20-plus year history of it being in our pavement and causing problems. So, and once this chemical reaction starts, it propagates through the slab and basically tears the slab apart from the inside. The chemical reaction itself expands on a microscopic level, expands, and it breaks the bond between the rock and the cement and starts peeling apart. And to add more to that, there's also an alkali silica reaction that's less prevalent. The alkali silica reaction is the similar kind of reaction coming from the sand that can be used. So we're monitoring for that, too. The city, along with the other cities in St. Charles County, started the EMPC to monitor the materials going into concrete and approve things so that, approve things that are submitted from the contractors so that we can avoid these issues. But the picture here is an example of how bad it can get on some of our streets. And then this is a much more recent example, that's some clear ACR issue going on on Country Orchard Drive. And you could see what it looked like before our crews got there, and you could see what it looks like after they had done that. And what they do is they strip out all the loose pavement, and here they're using hot mix asphalt and rolling it back in to make a temporary repair to that pavement. And to talk a little bit about what a normal joint issue might be compared to an ACR issue, wanted to show you these two pictures here. On the left is what we'd call more of a normal pavement issue or joint issue, and on the right is ACR. And the main difference here, if you can see it, is you see these little cracks in here, it's kind of a dark colored substance kind of coming out those cracks and how it, on all four corners here, there's cracking coming up. That's that ACR reaction peeling apart the pavement. And you could tell here on that right slide that we've had street crews out there probably four or five times just on that one joint. And even that, the oldest repair, that's that strip down the middle there, it's been there probably eight to 10 years. It's intact, but what's happening is all the concrete around it's falling apart. So as the concrete falls apart, there's another pothole that you got to go in and fix. Sometimes the loose concrete causes the pot, or the repair to pop out, but many times the repair stays in place and the concrete around it just keeps continuing to disintegrate. Then on the left is, you know, you could tell that the, most of that slab is in good condition, so that that repair that we've done on those joints, that'll have a long life, that'll go for a long time, five, 10 years, maybe even more. But on the, on the right, that picture, whatever we do there, it's not going to last very long. So tonight, we're going to talk about the different street maintenance techniques that we use, kind of go through each one. We'll start off with crack seal here. Crack seal is that the black tar that goes on the pavement, seals the joints, and that's really pavement maintenance or preventative maintenance. It's not really a repair. It's a preventative maintenance, and what you're trying to do is seal the joint to stop materials from getting down in the joint or water getting down in the joint. Because with the heat, heating and cooling of the pavement, that joint's going to kind of open up and close up. When it opens up, you don't want material, little rocks to get down in there, because when it goes to close up because of the expansion, now you got a point where all that pressure comes to it, and it's going to pop a, crack a joint or can crack a joint. So you, that, the crack seal only is preventative maintenance to prevent those things from happening. Then, of course, we've got the pothole patches. Not much to say on that, everything, everybody knows what we do there, but essentially, that's where we go in, break out the material that's loose in there and then patch it. And then we started using Tech Crete a couple of years ago. Tech Crete is more of a rubberized material that's heated up and then it flows into the joint. In this case, you do milling with a milling machine first, you mill it down, and then you place the material in there. And then, then we have asphalt PDR. PDR is partial depth repair. So it's doing that same thing with asphalt. So you're, you're taking a bad joint, milling it down, and putting asphalt in there. And you could do it with concrete as well. We've been doing that for a few years. Same principle, just with concrete. And then you got the whole slab replacement, which speaks for itself. You know, when the whole slab is so bad, you're ripping out the whole thing and starting over. So I'll get a little bit more detail into each one of these. Crack seal, we do that on a five-year rotation. That's a capital program that engineering department runs. Luckily, we have five wards, so it's very easy to break the city up into five areas that we do the crack sealing in, and we just rotate that one, one per year. Annual cost about $300,000. And really, that's, that's only going to go into the small cracks. I mean, from, from nothing, and two inches is almost too wide for it. You know, it's, it's probably only between zero and one that crack seal does anything. So it's not going to work on a larger crack. It's a very quick process, and it's very cheap. And then you got the asphalt pothole repairs. You know, they break it out, clean out all the loose material, put in a bonding agent. We try to use hot mix. Most of the time, we have three hot mix trailers. And when the weather's bad or we can't get hot mix, we resort to cold mix, just because that's what is available. Most of this occurs after winter and the spring. And then, but we do have an asphalt crew year round. Right now, we have pretty much all our crews doing pothole repairs. Unfortunately, it's gone that deep into the year with that activity. But we do always keep one crew on pothole repairs year round. And it's fairly quick process. You know, a typical pothole, it takes about 15 minutes to fix, just one single pothole. And back on crack sealing, I forgot to mention that each ward has about 140 miles of road. But when you look at the cracking here, it's not just one line down that length of pavement. You've got the, the lines going across, you've got the cracks in there. You could easily triple that. So you're talking about 400 to 500 miles of actual crack sealing going down. So when they, when they're doing that, they're doing many miles of this each day to keep up with the workload. So Tech Crete PDR, what, this process takes typically a day. They'll mill it out, they put it in a base course, let that cool, and then they come back later in the afternoon and put the finished course on it. And so in one day, they're able to mill it out and then return it to service for that one area. Right now, we're doing $1 million of this a year in, in the contracted work that engineering does. And then on top of that, street department has equipment and is doing that, and we budget $150,000 just for the material part of that. See, the capital work started two years ago, the in-house work started just last year. The sweet spot for this is cracks that are between four inches and 12 inches. So if you get any wider than this, this material's very expensive, and you start spending a whole lot of money on that. It's somewhat of a quick process, and it's a lot cheaper than a full slab repair. And then, then you got the asphalt partial depth repair. This is also a one-day process. We started this back in 2008, did a lot of it between then and 2017. But then in 2017, we were directed to not do this any longer in the residential streets, and I'll come back to that later. We did resume doing it on collector and arterial roads last year. And this, this repair is good for eight inches and to a little bit wider, 24 inches. And we've got to go at least two inches deep, and that's true with all the partial depth repairs. Got to get at least deep enough for that material to get in there and bond and not come out real quickly. It's the cheapest type of a PDR process, it's the fastest type of a PDR process, and it has longevity between five and 15 years. We have a lot of examples that are 12-plus years in the city from what we were doing earlier on. And then the concrete PDR, this is a two-day process, same principle as the others, but it takes longer and it takes more staff to put it down, handling the concrete and getting it in there. So what we mill out one day and prep one day, then we generally pour the next day, so it's a two-day process. It's good for the eight to 24-inch width repairs, again, two inches minimum depth. And it's, so it's the slower process, and it requires the most effort, but it's still a lot cheaper than a full slab repair. You're going to get five to 15 years of life out of it. And then you go to the whole slab repair. We budget $4 million in this a year for the contracted work, and then the street department's doing slabs that are more emergency-based stuff, that can't wait to get a contractor out there. The, the street department's more a quick reaction when there's an urgent need there. A typical slab is 13 feet wide and 15 feet long, and the process of replacing that is typically more than seven days with getting the, ripping out the pavement, prepping the base, ordering the concrete, getting the concrete in there, letting the concrete cure, and putting traffic on it. It's about a seven-day process at best. In, in years past, when we had better concrete deliveries, we were able to turn it around in sometimes three days, five days. But now with the deliveries now, it's, it's stretched it out the whole process. And it's the most expensive project, process, but it does last the longest, too. It has a lifespan of 30 to 50 years if you're, you're doing this right. So if you kind of compare all these together and look at doing 100-foot linear distance with these, each type of process and compare pricing, you're looking at crack sealing, taking about 10 minutes to do that and costing only $100. To do a pothole patch or a bunch of pothole patches on a 100-foot stretch, it would take a crew about 1, 1.2 hours, cost you about $710. And then you get up into the Tech Crete, it's going to take you about three and a half hours to get that 100-foot done. It's going to cost you $5,400, so you could see how the price jumps. But then on the last column there, you could also see the longevity goes from five to, up to five to 20 years on that. And then asphalt PDR, it's the quickest of the PDRs, it's the cheapest of the PDR, and it has a five to 15-year life expectancy on it. So roughly two hours to do 100 feet of this, $1,800. So very reasonable and good return on the investment. Concrete, like I said, it's a longer process. Now you're talking about $4,500 in expenses and a similar return on longevity. And then you're talking about replacing 100 feet of slabs, the whole slabs, you're talking about seven to 10 days worth of work and $23,000. So you could see how it really pays to do the PDR-type repairs, because that's your quickest, and you get a good return on that with the longevity of that. So as I mentioned earlier, we are not allowed to do asphalt PDR in the residential streets because of the council direction back in 2017. And, and I want to point out with these two slides here, on the left is what we're doing because of that. Those are pothole repairs. And then on the right is an older asphalt PDR. So you could see with the older asphalt PDR, you got clean lines, it's actually faded, so there's not a whole lot of difference between the asphalt and the concrete any longer. And then on the left, you got multiple repairs, we've been out there multiple times, and it, it looks ugly, it has, it doesn't look any better than the picture on the bottom right there. So, you know, just to hit on that point again, that, you know, you get the clean lines versus a pothole, but the real big difference is the longevity. Your pothole's only going to last for a few years. The asphalt PDR has proven to last for a long time. So really, the whole point of this presentation up to this point is to ask for your permission to be allowed to be able to do the asphalt PDR in residential streets again, because we think that not only is it a better repair, cleaner look, but it's, it's economical and better for the community. So now there could be other opinions on that, I'm sure, but I thought I'd pause right here and, and see what the council's interest is in allowing us to get back into the asphalt PDR business in residential.
Mr. Caschella.
I have to ask, in 2017, what was the reason for changing the direction and going away from doing the partial depth asphalt?
So at the time, there, we were in subdivisions doing it, and the complaint was that it looked terrible. You're, you're putting black lines on the street, and it was not received well. The, the thought process was that we should just be replacing the whole slab. But you could see with the cost of things, you can't really afford to do that, you can't do that everywhere. So that's where it came from, is that it looked bad, and we should be just doing full slab repairs.
It was all about looks.
Yeah.
I think between the two pictures, I don't know if you picked the best example and the absolute worst example, but those are, those are polar opposites of what I expect for, you know, something that looked good to be completed and something to look like it was maybe just sloped together.
Okay. Ms. Taylor?
Well, I definitely support this. As you know, we kind of asked you all to bring this today to the workshop, but saying this, I do have only a couple pages of questions. You answered most, though, but can you go back to the slide where you showed the difference in cost and, yeah? I was wondering, so if you changed this asphalt patch, is that what you call patch replacement? Or PDR, to say PDR? So you can only do it with eight to 24 inches? Potholes that are smaller, you wouldn't?
Correct, yeah. So if it's less than eight inches, we'd go to the Tech Crete as our preferred option?
Oh, the Tech Crete, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, and?
The Tech, and the Tech Crete looks like concrete.
Yeah. I did have a question, because I was researching some of this myself, too. I mean, it's definitely been one of the big efforts that I put into this, and I came across something called spray injection. Have you ever heard of that?
No. How is that done?
I mean, I don't know the ins and outs, but I was looking at the Federal Highway Administration, and they definitely suggest, you know, the asphalt PDR, but then they mentioned something about spray injections for potholes? I mean, one of the big things, especially with the little ones, when they fill them, I mean, I've, we've seen them pop out weeks after they're replaced, so I can see how it's pulling your hair out, just going back and having to replace or repair the same ones over and over again. So I don't know, this spray injection seemed to be something that was better than just filling that I ran across. And I mean, I'm bringing it up just because, I mean, no pothole is, I say it's like a snowflake, none of them are exactly the same, right? So you have to go about it different ways. And if we do decide to move forward on this, I would definitely, you know, don't want to, you know, pigeonhole you into just this way, that maybe other ways, like the spray injection could be put in there.
Right. All of these are like tools in a toolbox, and you want to use them when, when the application is right, you know? I'll do some research on that spray injection.
Okay, thanks.
Is that it? Ms. Ragsdale?
Thank you for that look, Mr. Mayor.
No, I'm giving, I was giving the look to Mr. Kewen.
So I'm curious about the, the price of the whole slab replacement. Is that for asphalt or concrete? And would that price change whether it was asphalt or concrete?
Yeah, that, that is based on concrete slabs. So, yeah, the asphalt process would be the milling overlay type of work, and it's definitely a different price.
Okay, so if, as a council, we said yes in the residential areas, let's go with the asphalt, if we ended up having to do whole slab replacement, could we then, for that area, the slab replacement be asphalt to kind of match?
So, I mean, we would still do slab repairs, full slab repairs with the capital program and with the street department, but?
But that would be concrete and not asphalt?
Yeah, so, I mean, we're, I should have said, this is all about concrete streets, so we're not talking about asphalt streets at all, and I didn't mention that at the beginning.
Okay, thank you.
So if it's a concrete street, they're going to replace it with concrete, and they're not going to replace the whole slab with, with asphalt. So, before I get to Mr. Kewen, because we'll never get out of here if I... I know we have in our CIP, and each ward gets it, but if there is a slab that need to be replaced, our street department will go out and replace that slab on an emergency basis.
Yeah, so, yeah, street heaves are the, the big thing, and we've had several this week. So when that happens, our street department is going to be the one going out there and taking care of it, because it can't wait.
It's, it's not going to be every five years, you know, well, you tend to live with it for five years.
Right.
If it's that bad a shape, we will come out and either do the patch repair or we will do the whole slab replacement.
Correct.
Depending on, on the emergency side of it.
Yes, yeah.
Okay. Anybody else? Mr. Wexler?
After you go back and do the asphalt PDRs, are you going back and crack sealing around the edges of that?
Yes. Yeah, that, that does happen, yes.
Okay, and that's just our in-house guys go back and do that? We're not waiting on a contractor to come back to do that?
Yeah, our asphalt, I mean, our crews have the, the equipment to do that, and so they, they're doing that after either slab repair or the PDRs and stuff, they do that, yes, for their work, yeah.
Thanks.
Mr. Roth?
Yes. On these slab repairs, you say you fill it in, seal it in with flux seal and all that, or asphalt or crack seal or whatever?
Yeah.
Why don't you guys put expansion joints in?
So we do have a program of retrofitting expansion joints, so there should be expansion joints installed when it, when it first goes in. So, but then we also have a program to go back out and recut those expansion joints in areas that are needed. So we have a, a big grinding wheel that, that does that. And so we do have the capability, and we do do that where it's needed.
You put in the crack seal after that, or?
Yeah, yeah, and also on, in, in full slab work, oftentimes, we're adding those expansion joints, too. So it's not just retrofitting it on an existing street, but when we're doing a lot of slabs on the street and it needs an expansion joint, we'll, we'll go ahead and add that in there, too.
You know, in Missouri, it's like one of the worst things to put on asphalt, just doesn't last long. I mean, we're in the worst climate, hot summers and cold winters, and that just tears up asphalt and crack seal and all that. But no, you guys go ahead. Question, a few questions. I felt like I, everybody else had a question, so I had to throw a couple in there. Thanks.
Mr. Boyer?
Can you go to the picture again of the good and the bad? So?
So, like that one?
Yeah, so are these the same type of, is one a pothole replacement and the other the asphalt PDR?
So what this is showing is on the picture on the upper left-hand corner, we, we could have certainly done the, the PDR application. Instead of just filling the potholes multiple times, we could have come in there, ground it down, and done the asphalt PDR there, and it would have lasted a lot longer and looked better.
So just today, a question came up about Harrisburg Court, and I believe that's your ward. So, so I jumped in there, and I looked back, and I said, okay, when, when was this street placed? And it was placed around the end of 2003, 2004. So 21, 22-year-old street, right? And Steve went back and researched our work orders. So they've been doing work orders when it hit 10 years old. So the joint started unraveling at 10 years old. Had we had the ability at that point or a few years after to go in, do the more solid PDR asphalt repair, they wouldn't have been back out there. But instead, they just had six work orders already this year and have three more on it. So what, what, what we've created is the situation on the left, where they're back in there again and again and again. Instead of outdoing other work, repairing side, so they're just chasing their tail, right? Back in there again, some of y'all said it pops out right back away, right? Sometimes it lasts longer, sometimes it doesn't. So, so that's put us and, and their staff in this circle that we can't get caught up, right? So, so this is a really good tool to be able to do that, to, to have that set there and last for eight, 10 years, allow them to go on and do other work. So ultimately, what got us here, right, is, is what Steve said. We have these joints that are unraveling 10 years. Instead of slabs lasting 30 and 40 years, here we are, patching joints and continuing to have to patch joints for another 10 and 20 years because we don't have the funds to replace the slab. So, so some of the history, that's how we got here, and we're trying to get caught up. Funds have been much better now, especially with the use tax, but, but we have all these bad, bad, bad slabs out there that we don't have the ability to, to replace. So we're, we're doing the best we can to patch them and let them, let them last another five and 10 years, so.
I think we all saw the video of downtown St. Louis with the street that popped. Are we in danger of that anywhere? If so, is there a ramp that we can drive on?
Are you talking about the street that popped up right when the car drives over? Yeah. We do have heaves here, we've, we had three this week.
Oh, really?
Typically, it doesn't happen instantaneous like that, it's more of a slow process, and I don't know how they ended up catching that on video, but that was amazing. Yeah.
Eddie Bryan? Mr. Kewen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In talking with Councilmember Taylor, the two of us have been, you know, beating our head against the wall trying to figure out how do we get more money in the streets? Well, one of the things that I, I wanted to, one of the reasons I wanted to address this is I was on the council when we decided to abandon asphalt PDR in residential streets. And even at that time, my thought was, is, you know, I'm, I'm more of a pragmatist than I am someone who worries about, gosh, do the streets look nice and uniform? So I wanted to address this. 2017, I believe, we were still under a bond issue, so money wasn't really as much of an issue for the streets. And like you said, we're now patching potholes with asphalt anyway, and I love that you put these two pics next to, next to each other, because to me, that tells the whole story. The one on the right costs a little more, but it lasts five or 10 times longer than the one on the left. So why on earth wouldn't we want to use our, our streets money as wisely as possible? So I hope the rest of the council sees the wisdom in going back to asphalt PDR even in our residential streets.
Thank you.
Is that all?
Yes.
Wow! Wade, you got something else, or we're gonna, you want to answer Mr. Bender's question?
Yeah, we want to, I wanted to get direction, then we were going to move on to Wade's deal.
Anybody have a problem with them going back to the way it was? There you go.
Thank you.
We don't need to vote, do we, Carl?
You approve budgets and CIPs and handle it that way.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I knew I'd get you to get to answer a question here.
With some of the things we've been talking about, and that was a great lead into this, city bonded out a lot of work, mainly to secure right-of-way for 364 years ago, and until that project came in, city was out those dollars paying the interest rate on a large amount of money. That left us very little money to do slab repair, to do maintenance. We had years where we had half a million dollars, we had years where we weren't doing concrete slabs at all, and we thought it was never going to end. Steve and I used to cry and say, how are we going to manage our streets and maintain these? So, luckily and finally, and it felt like it would never get here, but it did, and that bond finally was paid off and allowed us a couple more million dollars in our SIF funding. With that, and as we thank the residents every chance we get, the use tax provided another funding source for us to maintain our streets. That has been a game changer to us, it still doesn't get us where we need to be, plus the years that we've gotten behind, but it's been a great addition, and as Steve said, we're doing four million now in our slabs, we're doing a million in contracted joint repair. Couple years ago, we weren't doing that. We've got money for paths now, you all have mentioned the paths and the condition, so it's still going to take us time to get caught up, but we have these funds now and we're putting them to use as best we can, be it PDR, be it concrete, PDR, things like that, so we thank the residents, it's been a much more productive process, and a year ago, we set up a pavement strategy with these different tools now to provide funds for each ward on a rotating basis, so. Last year was our first year, this is our second year. Again, it's going to take us some time to make it through the various wards, so this year, we're doing concrete slabs in Ward One, Ward Two is getting sidewalk and path, Ward Three is the targeted joint repair street we'll be doing, Ward Four is crack seal, and Ward Five is our joint repair that we'll be doing with the contractor, so. Last year, Ward Five was concrete, we did the bad slabs, now we'll follow that up with joint repair, so coming in, hey, this slab doesn't need replaced, we're going to take care of that joint, should last us another five and 10, 15 years, so. So, that's kind of the process, I just wanted to hit on that again. Again, let's be patient, let's give it time for this process to take place, hopefully everybody will see work occurring in their ward, and we'll get streets back in better condition, but again, it'll take time to catch up, so. With that, again, kind of what Steve hit on, this is Bryan Road, I believe, here's one of our joints, and we did the Tech Creek concrete repair out there, it's been holding up well, so that's another tool that we've been using, and it's been useful. In general, if you have questions, so we have a pavement manual, it's on the project management webpage, if you click on, like, the concrete repair program, you can click on that link, it provides all the streets, it provides a pavement condition index, the lower that number, 10, 12, 18, 20, the worse street, the worse condition that street is in, the higher the better, so. I know you guys get calls, hey, why aren't you out there doing my street? You can go or direct them to that manual, you can see that street's an 80, you can see around the corners a 65, so we're going to address that 65 before we're going to address that 80. It's a real good tool, it kind of talks more about the history, more about ACR, the funding, how in general, under our current funding, you know, that average PCI is going to continue to decrease until we hit some plateau, so, or until we increase those funds, so. But it's a real good tool, kind of provides a lot of that history, instead of us giving our presentation on the history and these charts and everything, that a couple years ago, Tony did a really good job and made a lot of spreadsheets on that, so. With that, any questions?
Wade, how often do we get our streets rated?
Great question, Mayor, so...
Thank you.
Yes, yes, so, the county actually provides funds for that, they do county-wide street rating system, they use, the company has a lot of high-tech equipment, they come in, they radar the streets and things like that, then it gives us a rating for each segment, so we use that when we submit grant fundings, all of the cities do, so we're on the same playing field. Somebody doesn't say, my street's a 70, and somebody else would say, well, that's really a 90, you know, that's not fair, so. It gives us an even playing field, it gives us great information to help us, guide us, where we need to do our repairs. Any given year, we're going to go out there, we're going to use that as a guide, but we're going to walk those streets, we're going to look, and sometimes they deteriorate quicker in a matter of a couple years, but mayor, it's every four to five years, we rate those, so.
And for the new councilman, what's a segment?
A segment is in-between intersections, so it breaks it up into many segments, and again, you know, if there's a street around the corner, we're in that subdivision, we're around the corner, we might pick up that street even though it's not quite as bad as every other street in that ward, but we try to use a little logic in the way we go about pavement repair, but that provides us with a really good guideline.
Okay, Mr. Snowden?
Thank you, Mayor. Wade, you may be about to speak about this, but at one point, we wanted all of our streets to be like a 75.
We did.
And not long ago, we changed that based on what the street was used for, can you speak about that a little bit?
Yeah, that's correct, you know, again, we're trying to do what we can with the funds that are available for the city, so we had, I mean, we weren't going to get 80 PCI or whatever it is, we said, let's have all our streets at 80 PCI, and we weren't going to get there, so we kind of went back to the drawing board. The Public Works Committee was really instrumental in helping us, I think we formed a subcommittee, had some council members on that, we walked a lot of streets, took a lot of pictures, did a lot of, because what is an 80, right? What is a 70? What is a 60? So, we really looked into that, kind of gave a lot of examples of, this is a 50, this is a 60, and came up with a different rating system based on the type of roadway, so an arterial, a Bryan Road, you want to keep that in better condition, it sees a whole lot more traffic, right, versus a cul-de-sac with 10 houses on it, so, so again, trying to use the money wisely, we need to put more, we can't afford to lose a Bryan Road, right? So, we're going to put more efforts towards that, more residents, more ADT, more daily traffic, so we keep that in a better condition than, say, a cul-de-sac road or a minor residential road, so.
Mr. Bibb?
Did you notice that Wade did not say Mike's question was a good one?
I just told him that.
It was actually the question I was going to ask, because I thought, Wade, you did a good job of explaining the PCI rating and where they can find it in the manual, but the discussions we previously had on ADT, and that then drives that maybe your PCI is lower than another street, but that street's ADT will dictate that it'll become a higher priority than others.
It's a very hard job whoever gets this program to manage, right? Because you do see the streets, you do want to take out more slabs, right? And you're out there and you're like, oh, and people are like, why didn't you get right around the corner? And, you know, sometimes we would love to, but that means there's a 70 over there that has 5,000 vehicles on it a day versus, you know, this street right here that has 100, and so it's tough decisions on where to spend these dollars.
I agree, and I think staff's done a really good job with it, and I also think that in the discussions of what average PCI should we have, there was a lot of conversation about, you'll never be perfect, we won't have perfect streets, there, I think that the city streets are in tremendously good condition compared to a lot of other places, and I think a lot of it has to do with the way that internally staff communicates between departments, where I previously lived, it was very common for the street to get fixed, and then you'd have utilities come in right behind it, whether it's a private utility or even the owned city's utility, so, I mean, it happens here and there in O'Fallon, you can't avoid, especially on the north side when there's water main breaks, things like that, but I think that, I just want to commend staff, that you guys do a really good job of making sure that you're sequencing in a logical manner to get the most efficiency for everything.
Thank you, Councilmember Bibb, and we do work with Steve and them, and, you know, if they have a lot of work orders and we're going to be in that area, hey, we're going to be in there, we're going to get the slabs next year, and sometimes it won't be, it'll be three or four years before we're in there, so. We try to coordinate that, our work order system, that when we got that set up and using GIS, and now you can look at that work order system, instead of flipping through sheets every morning for the street crews, hey, they can pull up a GIS map, see, hey, I got a curb here, and, oh, look, right around the corner, there's another one, maybe I can pick that up, so. Technology has been great over the past several years too, in allowing us to be more efficient, so.
That's it, sir? Anybody else? I will echo what Mr. Bibb, the staff is doing a heck of a job, and we will never get 100% satisfaction, that's just part of life, but what you guys do is amazing in keeping us all on somewhere to drive, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else for Wade or Steve? Thanks, gentlemen. Any other items for consideration? See, and then I have a motion go to closed session, 610, 02, 610, 0211, legal action, cause of action, or litigation involving public governmental body, or any confidential privileged communication between a public government body or its representatives and attorneys. 610, 0212, leasing, purchasing, or sale of real estate, and 610, 02112, sealed bids related documents till the bids are opened, and sealed proposals and related documents or any documents related to a negotiated contract until a contract is executed or all proposals are rejected.
So, move to Ragsdale.
Second, Bibb. Motion by Councilman Ragsdale, second by Councilman Bibb, roll call, Katie.
Councilmember Bibb?
No.
Councilmember Roth?
No.
Councilmember Ragsdale?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Boyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Coskella?
Yes.
Councilmember Kewen?
Yes.
Councilmember Wexler?
Yes.
62, we're in the community room at 620. Want to call June, want to call June 26, 2025, O'Fallon City Council meeting to order, roll call, Bess?
Mayor Hennessy?
Present.
Councilmember Wexler?
Present.
Councilmember Roth?
Present.
Councilmember Boyer?
Present.
Councilmember Thompson?
Seized, excused.
Councilmember Bibb?
Yes.
Councilmember Coskella?
Present.
Councilmember Kewen?
Present.
Councilmember Taylor?
Present.
Councilmember Cook?
Seized, excused.
Councilmember Ragsdale?
Present.
Fair and reasonable, please stand for the invocation by Councilman Kewen, followed by a pledge allegiance led by Councilmember Roth.
Thank you, we'll all just bow our heads. Dear Lord, thank you for an opportunity to live and thrive in this community, be with each of us tonight as we engage in city business, and help us to make the best decisions for our community and do so in a friendly and productive way. And though we may disagree on the best course of action from time to time, let us do so as brothers and sisters in this community with respect for one another. Continue to watch over this community in which we are free to live, work, play, and pray in freedom and security. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Folks, you have agenda in front of you, what's the pleasure?
Motion to approve, Bibb. Second, Wexler.
Motion by Councilman Bibb, second by Councilman Wexler. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
The opposed, motion passes. First thing on a presiding officer's report, I, Bill Hennessy, mayor of the great city of O'Fallon, declare the festival district for July 3rd, 4th, 5th, and 6th, 2025 to be in effect during the period of the festival and throughout periods of our preparation for the event. Residents will be temporarily inconvenienced in our area subdivisions near the festival grounds and will experience road closures and parking restrictions in accordance with our district ordinance. A complete version of ordinance 6095 is available on the city's website at www.ofallammo.gov, on the city cable channel, or by contacting the city clerk's office. In advance, I would like to thank everyone for their patience and consideration in helping to enforce our ordinances in order to make our Harrison Freedom Festival safe and fun experience for everyone. Thank you. Next is Community and Children's Resource Board of St. Charles County, Melinda McElainy. Melinda?
Good evening. Again, my name is Melinda McElainy, and I'm the executive director of the Community and Children's Resource Board of St. Charles County. I want to thank you for your time this evening. I would like to share with you tonight a little bit about the CCRB and our new community needs assessment. CCRB is a political subdivision of St. Charles County created in 2004 by county voters. Through an eighth of a cent sales tax, we fund children's mental health and substance use treatment services for children throughout the county. This year, we're investing just over $15 million in 68 programs at 37 agencies. We contract with local nonprofits to provide these youth and mental health substance use treatment services to youth ages 19 and younger, parents, caregivers, and families, as well as professionals who serve children, such as teachers and first responders. Our funded services fall in four general categories: prevention, crisis stabilization, early intervention, and treatment. In 2024, programs funded by CCRB served 123,000 youth, more than 3,000 parents and caregivers, and over 4,000 professionals. Programs funded by CCRB served more people in 2024 than we did in 2023, allowing us to continue to meet the needs of our growing county. Our services reached every zip code, gender, and race last year. Further, more than 80% of youth in the county received at least one CCRB-funded prevention service, a huge reach of our funding. Evaluation of these programs show that they were highly effective in creating better outcomes for our community's kids. Our new community needs assessment from 2023 explored how children and youth in our community are faring. We have four reports ranging from in-depth data and analysis to a Cliff Notes version of all of that information. All of you, I provided you with a copy of the Cliff Notes version, the executive summary, but if you're a person that likes a lot of data and tables and percentages and numbers and words, I encourage you to go to our website and download one of the more in-depth reports, because there is a ton of information there about our kids. Our needs assessment explored four areas of child and family well-being. While CCRB mainly focuses on the behavioral and mental health area, we know that all four of these are interrelated and impact each other, so that's why we take a look at them all. Our needs assessment showed several areas of strength when it comes to our county's kids that we should celebrate, and I really do want to draw attention to that, because so often, it's very easy for us to focus on the negative, and there are some things, some data trends that are going in the wrong direction, but I first want to focus on some of the just really great things within our community. First, rates of substantiated child abuse neglect have dropped 34% since 2004, when we were founded. St. Charles County has the second lowest rate in the St. Louis region, and our rates are lower than that of the state. In 2023, 41 youth were admitted to substance use treatment programs in the county, which is too many, but that represents a 57% decrease since 2009. Overall poverty in St. Charles County was 5% in 2022 compared to 13% in Missouri. Infant mortality has dropped 25% since 2004, which is lower than the state rate and second best in the St. Louis region. Finally, high school graduation rates have improved to 94% in 2022, which is higher than Missouri's average. As good as that is, again, the data shows some emerging issues, particularly around, first, youth self-injury, has risen 11%, it rose from 11% in 2012 to 21 and 1/2% in 2022. Youth suicide rates have risen 13% since 2003, and further, 9% of youth in 2022 reported having planned a suicide attempt in the past year while 13% had seriously considered suicide. Providers reported that more kids are having higher levels of anxiety, depression, difficulty controlling their emotions, and decreased social skills. Providers also reported that children are presenting with more intense symptoms, which leads to longer time in care and higher demands on the staff. While still below the state rate, the percentage of infants born in the county with low birth rate has increased since 2004 to 7 and 1/2%. The data also shows an increase in the number of cost-burdened households, which probably is not a surprise to any of us who live in the county. Nearly half of renters spent 30% or more of their income on gross household costs in 2022. This is a key indicator used to predict the risk of homelessness, and our percentage of half, you know, nearly half of our renters being cost-burdened, that's higher than the state rate of 46%. While down significantly since 2004, we've seen an uptick in violent juvenile offenses in the last five years, and while still strong, student attendance has de... And while still strong, student attendance has decreased since 2011. And finally, providers are struggling to respond to these needs due to increased staff turnover and burnout, which has happened since COVID. CCRB is taking this needs assessment very seriously. We want to continue to invest in a wide spectrum of mental health and substance use services for our kids to ensure that those areas of strength continue to be strong. We don't want to rob Peter to pay Paul, because we know what will happen. Those things that are strong will start to go in the opposite direction. We're sharing this needs assessment with the community leaders such as you, in the hopes of increasing your awareness of the strengths and the challenges facing our community's youth. And we want to convene key stakeholders around these emerging concerns and discuss what we can do about it proactively. We invite you to help us explore these emerging issues further, and share the needs assessment with your constituents. And finally, although I know that I'm preaching to the choir, I ask you to continue to buy local, because every time you buy something in the county, you are helping create brighter futures for our community's kids and our families. Thank you so much for having me tonight, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. You also have my business card, and if you want to follow up with me later, I'm more than happy to schedule some time to talk with you individually.
Thank you. Any questions for Melinda? Thank you, ma'am.
All right. Thank you again for having me.
Next is an O'Fallon Community Foundation update. Michelle?
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor and council members, for the opportunity to report to you tonight on the O'Fallon Community Foundation. My name is Michelle Woods. I'm currently serving as the Vice President, and tonight I get to share with you what this revitalized organization has been working on to continue improving our wonderful community. The mission of the O'Fallon Community Foundation is simple and powerful: to maximize the quality of life in O'Fallon. The Board of Directors are proud to be passionate leaders who love the great city of O'Fallon. Our primary focus areas are history, community, enrichment, and progress. The foundation, as you may know, has been around a while. It was formed in 1998 with the goal of bringing Zumwalt's fort to life in Zumwalt Park, preserving a piece of O'Fallon's rich history and creating a beautiful destination for residents and visitors alike. Well, since the completion of the fort, the foundation has been hard at work raising funds to support meaningful, people-focused programs. And right now, our efforts are centered around several impactful initiatives. The first is scholarships. Scholarships for City of O'Fallon programs such as swim lessons, summer camps, adult programming, sports registrations, all providing important, healthy, and engaging activities for O'Fallon residents. We also are proud to support our police department and our fallen officers by sending several of them to Police Week in Washington, DC. We have a few other endeavors, but we are starting small and have big plans for the future. Since we began these scholarships in October, we've already funded 16 swim lessons for nine O'Fallon families, and helped cover costs for seven children to attend summer camp. That's $2,000 invested directly into the well-being of our community's youth. We were also incredibly grateful to receive generous support from the Mayor's Charity Ball Foundation, which allowed us to expand these programs and serve even more families over the next years. So we're not stopping here. We have several new projects to further elevate quality of life for all who call O'Fallon home. We have a website that we'll be launching soon, so you can learn more, also giving residents an opportunity to donate, and that will be ofallencommunityfoundation.org. So on behalf of the O'Fallon Community Foundation Board of Directors, we want to thank you for your time and all that you do for the city. We're proud to be part of building a brighter, stronger O'Fallon, one family, one program, one project at a time. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for Michelle? David, you got a question?
No, sir, I don't. Very good, Michelle.
Thanks, Michelle. Brings us to citizens' comments. Mr. Dinoff.
Thank you very much, members of the City Council. My name is Arne C., AC Dinoff, City Public Advocate. Couple of issues on the agenda really quick. Bills 7761 and 7762, Caledonia. If I recall, I was in there about a couple weeks ago, and I saw some cracked pavement, some cracked slabs, and so I hope we're not giving back these bonding without replacing those slabs from the construction companies. That's very concerning. The other issue is on the agenda is Resolution C., $127,000 for the public works facility. How many layers of inspections do we need? We have the general contractor, the subcontractor, a Vision Young construction manager that you hired for several hundreds of thousands of dollars, city project manager Kathy Polite, Building Inspection Division Nathan Lacy. We've got warranties. I don't know how many lines of inspections that we need. And finally, on the Resolution D., $241,000 equipment replacement for this room, AV issues. We spent a buttload of money two years ago in this room to replace cameras and monitors, and now you're spending another $241,000. Finally, I wanted to talk about Bills 7765, which is a dispatch emergency communications contract, and Bill 7766, prisoner confinement, daily rate of $45. The city of Cotterville has a population of today 6,300 people, another thousand people for each 2025 and 2026. We're building four new subdivisions, so that will be 8,500 citizens in 2027. The amount that they pay the city of Lake St. Louis, and I have this confirmed from the city clerk to the city of Lake St. Louis and the city clerk of Cotterville, they pay $81,000. In this contract, you're giving them a sweetheart deal of $70,000. When it comes, and that's $9.18 per call, take, dispatch, radio, that's involving the computer, running of the computer entry, et cetera, et cetera. The police chief in Cotterville did not tell the truth. He told you he had 5,700 calls of service in 2024. They ran it today through the CAD system in the city of Lake St. Louis, and it's actually 7,626 actual calls in 2024. I submitted many public information requests, and I have a ton of information and contracts. Since 2014, at least, the city of Cotterville's been paying $81,000 per year for dispatching services.
You have 10 seconds.
And so now you're giving them a sweetheart deal. Our citizens may suffer, and I want to make sure there's no backup of calls, and that we're recouping all of our costs and making enough to pay for replacement costs of equipment.
Dinoff, your time's up, sir.
I asked somebody to look at this contract. Thank you.
Mr. Snowden, you want to answer that?
Not really. I'm sorry. Yes, so $11,000 difference between what they pay today and what they've paid for several years versus what we're charging. I can have Mr. Jokers step up and speak about it, but it's my understanding that this is because we have three or four people on duty at a time, and the amount of additional work is de minimis, whereas Lake St. Louis had to add additional staff in order to provide that same service. Mr. Jokers, do you want to add to that?
Mr. Snowden, I agree with you 100%. The one thing I looked into before I met with Mr. Snowden and the chief about bringing on another agency is that our 911 center would maintain the high standards that I've brought over. I have no doubt that we can do that with our personnel, and he is correct. We have the number of personnel needed to do it at the level that we are charging them.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Brings us to ward reports. Ward two.
Just a reminder, next week is 4th of July. We get to go out and celebrate our country, our city. There is a Freedom and Heritage and Freedom Fest, the 3rd through the 6th. If you happen to be out there at 3 o'clock on the 4th, I'll be in the dunk tank. You can actually throw balls at me and get me wet. So come on out, have some fun, just get out and celebrate, and that's all I got.
Thank you. Ward three.
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing for me.
Mr. Bib.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Councilman Wexler has a question for you later. Councilman Boyer. Just a reminder to residents that while you can buy fireworks from now until July 6th, the city's regulations on shooting of fireworks is July 3rd and 4th from noon to 11:00 PM. We put that in place so that people are enjoying their rights and their abilities to shoot off fireworks, but also respecting their neighbors, so please stay within that timeframe. I know O'Fallon PD will be out enforcing it strictly, but there's people with babies and dogs and suffering from PTSD. Hopefully, it's a smaller window, and it's a much more enjoyable holiday for them as well. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Ward four, Ms. Taylor.
Well, first, I also are going to be in the dunk tank on Saturday, so just letting that at 4 o'clock right before the mayor, so come on out to throw balls at both of Otherwise, Ward four's been kind of quiet, so that's always a good thing. But I wanted to take this time to talk about our police. Since I've moved to O'Fallon, I've always thought that we had a strong police department, and since I've got more behind-the-scenes in-depth look, I can only say that I've been truly impressed, and particularly with our chief, Chief Manini, who is an outstanding leader. And I know I share this sentiment with many others that I've come across in the area. He leads with fairness, transparency, and a proactive approach that I think sets the tone for the entire department. In fact, I even asked Mr. Snowden at one time if we can give him a ward, and he had told me that O'Fallon doesn't have one, but that you actually won one before when you was at the city across the river. And honestly, I'd say I'm not surprised, because, I mean, you're definitely exceptional in the entire department. So with the holiday coming up, and I know it's right around the corner, it's especially stressful time for the police, and I just wanted to say thank you to the police and every single member of the police department for continuing to keep our community safe.
Thank you, Mr. Kewen.
I have nothing to report tonight. Thank you.
Ms. Ragsdale, Ward five.
Thank you. I just want to wish everybody a very happy Independence Day, 4th of July, and I, too, will be in the dunk tank on the 4th at 6 o'clock. So I had known somebody earlier this evening. I signed up, and five minutes later, and I'd known this guy for five minutes, and he said he was going to be out of town, but he was going to give all of his friends $20 bills. So I don't know how to take that. Happy 4th of July. Please keep our soldiers, those that are deployed, in your thoughts and prayers. Thank you.
Thank you. Ward one.
I will also be in the dunk tank on the 4th at 1:30. Other than that, nothing. Thanks.
Thank you. Last but not least, Mr. Roth.
I don't have a whole lot to say. I just, if you're going to do fireworks in your neighborhood or at your house, be respectful of your neighbors and everything. I know there's a lot of drinking going on, so when your kids come up and ask you to take the golf cart around, think twice or go ride with them. Just today alone, three different times, I about ran into kids on little scooters, driving in the middle of the lane. Golf carts, running stop signs a block from the city hall. Just be careful this weekend. Have a few drinks, but be careful. That's all I got.
Thank you, sir. City Ministers report. Mr. Snowden.
Thank you, Mayor. From January to late May, 12 supervisors from all across Team O'Fallon came together to learn more about the city and the art of being a supervisor, based on the ICMA course of instruction. I want to publicly recognize those folks for their hard work and diligence. They are Kevin Kreis from Communications, Joe Bloomfield from the Police Department, Tanya Hawkins from Human Resources, Rob Morris from Building and Code Enforcement, Paul Jokers from Emergency Communications, Brian Hemmer from Water and Sewer, Brian Kraft from Parks, Dalton Patton from Recreation, Steve Whitworth from the Police Department, Gary Fraley from Streets, Corey Sheets from Water and Sewer, and Jenna Waschinsky from Recreation. I really appreciate all of their time and attention, and that's all I have for tonight, sir.
Thank you, sir. Brings still business. Brings to Bill 7760. Motion for second reading by title only. Boyer. Motion by Councilman Boyer, second.
Wexler.
Second by Councilman Wexler. All in favor? Any opposed? Carl?
An ordinance granting a conditional use permit to the owners of League One volleyball to allow a commercial recreation facility in a HTCD High Tech Corridor District under certain conditions, on a certain tract of land located at 6707 Keaton Corporate Parkway within the city of O'Fallon, Missouri.
Thank you. Most final passage?
Boyer.
Motion by Councilman Boyer, second.
Wexler.
Second by Councilman Wexler. Questions or comments? Seeing none. Councilmembers, please cast your vote. Eight yes, zero no. Bill 7760, pass becomes ordinance number?
7221.
7221. Thank you, Bess. Brings to Bill 7661. Motion for second reading?
Kaskella.
Motion by Kaskella, second.
Bib.
Second by Councilman Bib. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carl?
An ordinance providing for the approval and acceptance of the dedication of streets and storm sewers excluding detention for maintenance by the City of O'Fallon, Missouri, for the streets of Caledonia, Platteine, Phase 4.
Thank you. Most final passage?
Kaskella.
Motion by Kaskella, second.
Bib.
Second by Councilman Bib. Questions or comments? Ms. Taylor?
So this was brought up about the streets and approving them before, but we do get a, they do a final inspection before all this.
Correct.
So, okay, I wanted to clear that up.
Yes, before they go on, before it comes on the agenda, they go out and inspect it and make sure everything's fine. Any other questions? Councilmembers, cast your vote.
The voting's closed.
Eight yes, zero no. 7761, pass becomes ordinance number?
7222.
7222. Brings Bill 7762. Motion for second reading?
Bib.
Motion by Councilman Bib, second.
Kaskell.
Second by Kaskella. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carl?
An ordinance providing for the approval and acceptance of the dedication of streets and storm sewers excluding detention for maintenance by the City of O'Fallon, Missouri, for the streets of Caledonia, Platteine, Phase 4A.
Most final passage?
Bib.
Motion by Councilman Bib, second.
Kaskell.
Second by Kaskella. Questions? Cast your vote, please.
The voting's closed.
Eight yes, zero no. 7762, pass becomes ordinance number?
7223.
7223. Thank you, Bess. Brings to Bill 7763. Motion for second reading?
Kewen.
Motion by Councilman Kewen, second.
Ragsdale.
Second by Councilwoman Ragsdale. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carl?
An ordinance amending Section 225.180 of the O'Fallon City Code relating to restrictions applicable to festival districts.
Thank you. Most final passage?
Kewen.
Motion by Councilman Kewen, second.
Ragsdale.
Second by Councilwoman Ragsdale. Questions or comments? Cast your vote, please.
The voting's closed.
Eight yes, zero no. 7763, pass becomes ordinance number?
7224.
7224. Thank you, Bess. Brings to Bill 7765. Motion for second reading?
Kewen.
Motion by Councilman Kewen, second by Councilman Kaskella. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carl?
An ordinance approving a memorandum of understanding for public safety communication services with the city of Cotterville.
Thank you. Most final passage?
Kewen.
Motion by Councilman Kewen, second.
Kaskell.
Second by Kaskella. Questions? Cast your vote, please.
The voting's closed.
Eight yes, zero no. 7765, pass becomes ordinance number?
7225.
7225. Thank you, Bess. Brings to Bill 7766. Motion for second reading?
Wexler.
Motion by Councilman Wexler, second.
Roth.
Roth.
Second by Councilman Roth. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carl?
An ordinance approving an intergovernmental agreement with the city of Cotterville for the processing and confinement of prisoners.
Thank you. Most final passage?
Wexler.
Councilman Wexler, second.
Roth.
Second by Councilman Roth. Questions? Cast your vote, please.
The voting's closed.
Eight yes, zero no. Bill 7766, pass becomes ordinance number?
7226.
7226. Thank you, Bess. Questions or comments on the committee and commission reports? Seeing none, will be read. Questions or comments on the consent calendar?
Motion to...
Go ahead.
Motion to approve Ragsdale.
Second, Kuen. Motion by Councilwoman Ragsdale, second by Councilman Kuen. Councilmembers, cast your vote.
The voting's closed.
Eight yes, zero no. Consent count has been approved. New business, Bill 7767. Motion for first reading?
Cascola.
Motion by Cascola, second.
Bibb.
Second by Councilman Bibb. Councilman Cascola, please present the bill.
Bill number 7767, an ordinance providing for the approval and acceptance of the dedication of streets and storm sewers, excluding detention for maintenance by the city of O'Fallon, Missouri for the streets of Caledonia, Platte Four, Phase One.
Thank you. Brings Bill 7768. Motion for first reading?
Kuen.
Motion by Councilman Kuen, second.
Taylor.
Second by Councilwoman Taylor. Councilman Kuen, please present the bill.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Bill number 7768, an ordinance approving a surface transportation block grant, STBG, program agreement, STGB, STBG, excuse me, dash 7302, parentheses, 718, end parentheses, by and between Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission and the city of O'Fallon to reimburse a portion of the Bryan Road pavement preservation project in an amount not to exceed $1,171,473.
Thank you. Questions or comments on Resolution 626, 2025B? Seeing none, motion second to introduce?
Wexler.
Motion by Councilman Wexler, second.
Roth.
Second by Councilman Roth. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carl?
A resolution authorizing an agreement with Thundercat Technologies to purchase and install technology, equipment, materials, and a service agreement in an amount not to exceed $559,534.
Motion second to approve?
Wexler.
Motion by Councilman Wexler, second.
Roth.
Second by Councilman Roth. Councilmembers, please cast your vote.
The voting's closed.
Eight yes, zero no. Resolution B's been approved. Questions or comments on Resolution C? Seeing none, motion second to introduce?
Bibb.
Motion by Councilman Bibb, second.
Cascola.
Second, Cascola. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?